Good evening. Joe, if you want to take the roll call, please.
Ms. Simeroli?
Here.
Mr. Nath? I saw him sign in.
I'm here, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Tolmer?
Here.
Mr. Lennon, he said he'll be late. Mr. Livingston?
Here.
And I'm Joe Cower.
So, to start, do we have any speakers this evening? Anybody that would like to speak? That signed up?
Excuse me, I thought the speakers came at the end of your meeting, not at the beginning of your meeting.
A few weeks, well, a few, in February, we actually started to have it in the beginning. Just to keep it a little more organized, especially with the upcoming issues or discussions that we're going to have, so.
I think, I think that's a major improvement.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to speak if, unless there are others who want to speak before me, then go ahead.
Well, I don't know. Is there anybody else that's signed up, Joe? No?
No.
Okay. Alright. So, go ahead, Bob.
Okay, hi, everybody. Excuse me. I, I was curious about, um, I had given our manager, Joe Cower, three, uh, I don't know, packets of information. The one was January, February the 7th, the second was February the 15th, the third one, I don't know when that was, after that. But primarily, the first one was a result of a aerial photograph that was sent to me by one of the people at the Army Corps of Engineers showing the original route of a McLaughlin, of a McLaughlin creek under the Baldwin Street Bridge and the railroad street bridge. And just to get to the point, it shows that the construction of a culvert over the original route changed the contour of the more gradual right-hand 90-degree turn north toward Collier Township greatly, and it has been essentially the cause of the flooding of two major areas of Bridgeville. And I want to mention something else that I just found about three days ago. I found the permit that was issued by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to allow that culvert to be built, and it was, you should be able to somehow politically get DEP to pay for replacing that culvert with a bridge, because they endorsed and permitted its construction, and it's been verified by DEP, a 1980 DEP study, a study I did about four years ago myself, and the study was just done, I think, last year by the engineering school at the University of Pittsburgh, but the opening under the culvert is something like 14 or 17 cubic feet of water a second, and it should have been double that. So, that's something for you to think about, okay, because I think you have a very good argument there to have that bridge replaced. And the other thing I wanted to emphasize, the other thing that the first pack of information illustrated was the flooding is not being caused by the Baldwin Street, the, I'm sorry, the Barre Road Bridge is being caused by the culvert, and if you take a closer look at that, despite what any alleged professionals claim, you'll find out that that's a fact. And the third pack of information I gave Joe to email to you guys was, it was primarily about, there's a more detailed plan showing the solution to the Bauer Road Traffic Congestion Problem and the importance of making, of not eliminating Bauer Road from the cement company to the McLaughlin Run Road intersection, but keeping it as two lanes heading west toward Washington Avenue and making Baldwin Street two lanes east, heading in the opposite direction. And I think, though, I think the Lennon Smith Engineering Firm did do a study, or did provide everybody a drawing that indicates that that eight foot, 150-foot-long ramp from right next to the Bauer Road Bridge down to Baldwin Street is certainly viable. And, and just to sum up, the, I'm sure you're all knowledgeable to some extent about PennDOT's desire to increase its never-ending desire for more millions of dollars a year to build roads and whatever they want to spend it on by putting a toll booth on I-70 right nine, right by the Bridgeville or on top of the Bridgeville exit. You guys should be outraged about that even being mentioned by PennDOT as a possibility, considering that they have ignored the traffic congestion problem on Washington Pike through Safad, Bridgeville and Collier for 50 years.
Okay.
I got a question, too.
Go ahead.
You said that somebody gave you that information. Can you clarify who it was?
About?
What information's that?
You said that there was, somebody gave you the aerial photo and everything and showing you where the flooding was or what caused the flooding. You said somebody, and you didn't say who gave it to you, gave you that information.
Yeah, it was, it was a young lady. I have her name somewhere. It'll be easier for me to get. But tell me, did you guys, tell me, have you guys been receiving the emails of these three packets of information? And have you been reading or studying the drawings? On the first one, the very first drawing was a, was a copy, as best that I could make it, of the original aerial photograph of the route of the McLaughlin Run Creek going under the railroad bridge.
Ms. Simeroli?
Yes.
This is Joe. I just want to state that I did not share this with Planning Commission. Mr. Fryer asked me to share that with Borough Council, and it was shared with Council, not Planning Commission.
Okay, alright.
Oh, Joe, Joe, excuse me, I'm sorry. I thought you were sending it to the Planning Commission as well. I might mention, by the way, the aerial photograph, it has 1959 is the year in which it was taken. But I'll be glad to get the, I guess, the woman's name from the Army Corps of Engineers that sent it to me. I would have no access of getting this stuff.
Okay.
But anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll send you, I'll send the guys on the planning committee. I don't know, Joe, can you, would it be too much trouble for you to email the guys on the Planning Commission that stuff to?
Not at all.
Alright.
Okay. Okay, and at any rate, I'd like to sum up just by saying this. Since you guys are, when you guys invited, I guess, the various city planning companies to make proposals to devise a comprehensive development plan for Bridgeville, what did you ask them for? What did you, did you define any of the problems that you'd like to get resolved? When you sent, or when you, I don't know, was it done on the internet? Was it done in the newspaper? How did you invite these people to present, uh, make offers to become engaged with you? And incidentally, the companies you've chosen, from what I know, they're outstanding. But what did you ask them? What problems did you ask them to solve?
Listen, and why don't we, Bob, if you don't mind, why don't we move on with our business? And we'll discuss that at the end. Alright?
Oh, wonderful.
There was an RFP that had to go out to request information, and it returned there, based upon the RFPs, it was returned to us answering their solutions or their, their ideas in regards to a planning mechanism to design a update to our comprehensive plan.
Oh, that's good. I'll be, I'll be happy to hang around and listen. And once again, thanks for the opportunity of giving you guys my thoughts about the problem. But this is, this is going to be the most important thing you guys do in your lifetimes. Excuse me for, that's not an exaggeration. But now is the time to get the total comprehensive plan that'll solve Bridgeville's 50-year-old traffic congestion problem and establish the economic basis for this community. But thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'll be happy to listen to your discussions of the issue.
Alright, thanks. Alright. Anybody else? Any other questions for Bob? Alright, so should we move on to the approval or the adoption of the February 22nd, 2021 meetings? Meeting minutes? Anybody have any questions or issues with it? No? Alright.
I'd make a motion to adopt as written.
Okay. All in favor?
Give me a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody opposed? Alright, motion passes. Now, one of the things that I did was I took it upon myself to move the new business of the discussion of the scoping, the preliminary scoping, things that did not make it into the comprehensive plan update. And Joe, I sent this all to you, to the committee members, alright? And basically, when I looked at what we had done, Tim, what you had done so great, was to pull out things that I felt perhaps needed to be addressed. Now, by far, if anybody has any questions or any issues, please bring them forward at this time. But these are the things that I saw. Small town charm, borough cleanup. Let's see, what else? The property, can you take that up a little bit there? Tim, Joe, alright, evaluation of existing parcels, traffic study, and code enforcement was something that was taken over, so we're not even going to bother with that. Does anybody have any additions to this list? Alright.
Justine, the only question is, where you've got some of these things being partially included in the scope of the comprehensive study, where, what's the point of comparison that you're using there?
Only because I just wanted to basically say that there were some things that were like small-time charm, alright? Some of that is included in the comprehensive plan and the request for the, in the RFP.
Just, okay, just by virtue of what you're asking them to put the solution together. I got you. Okay.
But I mean, you know, like, like small-town charm, yes. Are they going to look at Main Street? Are they going to look at the businesses and so forth? Yes, yes, yes. But at the same time, you know, do we want to clean up Main Street? Do we want to, you know, add flowers, that sort of thing? That's why I sort of broke it down into what was included and what was not. Alright? So, again, any additions to this? And did I leave out anything?
I mean, we talked about parks and stuff and, you know, but I think that might be a separate issue on its own.
Correct. That's what I was thinking. I mean, you know that, that in the RFP, it had requested the parks be looked at as to, you know, the efficiency and the effectiveness and that stuff. I think growing parks or adding to the parks, we can get a understanding, a better understanding before we even start the process.
Sure.
Alright. Dale, any, any comments? Do you think that pedestrian safety is included enough into the RFP?
Well, between the RFP and, and the, the active, the
Right.
I, I, you know, I, I think we're, that's one of the things we're, we're kind of on our way with.
Right.
Um, and that's going to be something that we're going to continue to talk about. It's not going to be solved this year or next year, but it's, you know, we're, we're starting down that road.
Okay.
So.
Alright.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. So, now, since, Tim, you did such a great job with all of our forms last year. Do you think, or does anybody have any ideas to whether or not these would work? Your, your charts or your evaluations would work for this process, or do we want to go less formal?
For which process or just?
The, the scoping process, to determine how we're going to handle these. I mean, last month, you said that you're looking at the low-hanging fruit. You know, are these, are these the items that you were thinking about when we discussed that?
Yeah, yeah, it was the stuff that kind of got left behind when we said, of all the seven or eight items that we talked about, the, the one that we all confidently moved forward on was let's ask for the funding for the comprehensive plan. Some of that stuff, I think, man, I forget who made the point, but it was like, look, if we, if we pursue too many of these other things and the absence of that, we're kind of putting the cart in front of the horse, and wouldn't it be better to do that in a more logical and analytical plan way? So, yeah, these are the things that were left over whenever we tabled them at the end of last year.
So, your concept scoping template, would this, is that too convoluted for this process, or would it work?
I mean, that was a kind of a point-in-time activity to just put a little bit of meat in the bones of what those concepts were. I think if we're, if we're kicking around the, you know, which ones of these do we want to move forward on and how?
Right.
Might not be a bad place to start, but it's going to very quickly get to the point of saying, okay, how do we practically start to execute some of these?
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
Justine?
Yeah.
I think maybe, I don't know, we could, I mean, we're not talking about, like, what we did last year when we worked on it. I mean, there was a lot of different topics we wanted to address.
Right.
You know, to narrow it down to, you know, four that we really liked, and these were kind of like, we talked about the low-hanging fruit. And particularly, you know, one of the reasons why these are here is, from my understanding, is we're not talking about a lot of money. You know, these are things that would be more sweat equity and, you know, like borough cleanup. So, I don't know, maybe it's something where we can get together and figure out, okay, put it, put a dollar figure, what would be the cost of, you know, what would be the cost involved with these? How many people you think we would need to, you know, if we're going to do a borough cleanup, you know, would that involve like organizing, you know, a group of volunteers or something, like, you know?
Right.
And just figure out what resources, what resources would be needed to do each, each of these items? And based off of what those resources are, are they realistic?
Right. Okay. So, and I agree. I think that, that we can keep this somewhat less formal than the prior, because this these are things that either involve the community or very little dollars.
Right.
So, I guess, do, do we want to take a look at these and actually put down some thoughts as to whether, what we think might be a good idea? And then maybe triage what everybody's saying? And, and, and put the notes, evaluate everything, and then determine what's important and the importance and the cost.
Sure, I guess. I mean, yeah, it makes sense.
Tim, you're the analytical one. What do you think?
Let me, let me just back up a step. Is, is the intent for us to pick a couple of things that we can start to move on in the next couple of months? That's what we're trying to get to.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
What I'm, what I was thinking that if you're looking at a schedule for the rest of the year, because I know, I think by this time last year, we already had your schedule. I mean, you had everything down pat, and we knew what we had to do. So, I'm trying to, to go that route.
Yep.
Alright. So, initially, what I was thinking was that we do this a little informally. We present or we look at everything that we think is included in this, and then discuss it, and then say, let's get everything on the table, or at least two of them on the table in April, and two of them in May with a solution or an issue to move certain things forward in June. And then, if, you know, the plans include money or funding or whatever, we move that into the August, September timeframe to council so that they could include it in their budgets. Or, I don't know. Joe, is there a certain time that, that grants fall in to effect, or are they any time throughout the calendar year?
It, it's not specific. It's specific to the program, so.
Okay. Alright. So.
Budget season.
Right. Is there a budget season?
Yes, you nailed it.
That is, there is a budget season.
Right, right. So, any comments, any ideas? I mean, I'll certainly, to, you know, I'll flesh out my thoughts a little bit and then email you guys and see whether or not you're willing to, if you think we can adhere to that schedule. Alright.
One general question, I, I should probably know this at this point, Joe, but when it comes to budget stuff, I know we're, we're covered for the comprehensive plan, or at least 5% of it. Do we have like a line item that's got even a couple of hundred dollars or a couple of thousand dollars? In the event that we come up with things like this mid-year, let's make stuff up and say, we're going to spend this Saturday beautifying Washington Pike for spring. Is that just a hard no at this point, or?
No, no, I think it depends on, it depends on, on the project, because some things just fit, just general operations, but there's a lot of things in our budget this year that we've already pulled the trigger on that came out of last year's planning commission meetings. We spent five grand on welcome signs that will be going up within the next couple of weeks. We put money in to do the comprehensive plan to start that. We put money aside to do some pedestrian improvement signage, so a lot of it has been answered, so it's just Rome wasn't built in a day.
Yeah.
Well, you know, even if, even if it comes down to we're looking at, you know, a thing for 2021, you know, you know, maybe it's just doing an Earth Day and marketing for an Earth Day on Earth Day, whatever, April 17th or whatever. So, and also, too, I have no problem going out and trying to perhaps get flowers or whatever, you know, it's just that we would need some assistance in planting those flowers, and in which case, does that come out of the, the general?
Yeah, I think it's something that we could work out.
Okay, alright. So, I mean, let's, let's go ground and see what happens, right? Or is that, are you discouraged? Go ahead, Dale.
Oh, I, go ahead and finish this. I, I do have one question, comment regarding the, this list that you put together.
Okay, alright. No, I was just, I mean, I don't want to discourage anybody, you know, but I think that we could have a wish list. I mean, it doesn't help to have a wish list and, and see what happens, you know? So, if not this year, next year. Alright.
Oh, Justine?
Yeah.
One of the issues that was kind of hanging out there from last year was parking.
Right, right.
Something that we want to try and, and further along this, this, this year?
Yeah, Joe and I talked, I'm going to talk to parking group and see if they would be willing to visit with us in April. And it's, you know, just talk, or number one, answer questions, and number two, come up with some sort of ideas to, you know, what their feelings are in regards to the parking situation in Bridgeville. Alright, so.
In, in some of the previous discussions that I had with them last year, you know, they have you know, they've got ideas about expanding some of the parking lots, but, you know, I'm not sure that there's, they perceive that there's a parking, parking issue in, in Bridgeville.
Well, yeah.
I know, I know that, you know, we've had people come before us over the last couple of years saying, you know, hey, you need to do parking here, you need to do parking there. And I'm not sure whether it's something that we need to look at, that we should be tackling, or, or if it's, you know, just discussions to be having with the parking authority or, or.
Well, in, in my opinion, I'd rather have an open discussion with them and ask the question and have them ask them to answer. So, it's, it's on the table. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's all about having some open dialogue.
Right, right. So. Alright. Anything else? Joe, do we have to do anything with this situation, or can we move on to other business?
I think we're good.
Okay. Alright. So, now, this is all you, right?
Yeah, just a couple of quick updates for the month. As Dale was talking about earlier, we applied for a grant a couple of months ago to complete the Active Transportation Plan. We did receive a $22,000 grant from the Active Allegheny Program for this effort, and the borough is putting $5,000 of our engineering budget towards the project, so a $27,000 budget project that can hit the ground running once we get approval from the county to proceed. This will address pedestrian issues that's been talked about for a long time. Active, complete streets, you know, bike, bike mode. Where, where the pedestrian issues that Dale was talking about, trail connectivity, so a lot of these big-ticket items could be addressed with this Active Transportation Plan. I'm working on an RFP for that project right now, that I want to bounce off the county, and once I get their blessing, I'd like to get your input as well, so that if there's anything I'm missing or you'd like to see included in the project, I'd like to get your feedback with that. So, it's actually good news that we don't have to wait. The, the, the money is here, and this is, this is a good thing for the town, because hopefully, we can put, you know, pen to paper and solve some of these active transportation issues.
Right. So, this is all planning, is that correct? I mean, is?
Correct. But, and the, the goal is it's implementable planning. We want, you know, short, medium, long range. This is how you do it. This is what it costs. If it's big, this is where you go to get the money, that kind of thing, something that we could actually use.
Okay.
So, it, it should be a very good project that has some fruits at the end.
Do we have a timeframe that that has to be spent, or?
We only got the notice that we were awarded the day of the council meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is very fresh.
Okay, alright.
And now, we just sent the acknowledge back, I meant back to the county last week saying, yeah, we accept the grant, so I, I anticipate something very soon. So, it's moving quick.
Alright, and hey, thank you for doing that. I mean, it's great that we can at least take some of these things and get a better, nothing else, get a better understanding as to where we could improve.
And we can get a professional transportation engineer giving us facts.
Correct. Good, good. Alright, and when do you think that RFP will be out to the out?
I'm hoping that we can have the approval from the council to release it at our April meeting, so we could have it out, April, May, so I'll fast-track it, provided that the county's okay with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dale had something.
I, I, I want to, you know, commend Joe for his work with the, the grant application. Good job, Joe.
Yeah.
I'm getting some money.
Yeah, thank you. The second thing was the PennDOT Safety Review of Washington Avenue. It took a while to get a response back from PennDOT, but I, I got a letter back from PennDOT on our request we sent a while back, asking for them to do a formal safety review of Washington Avenue. That was our pedestrian concerns that came out of that pedestrian accident late last year. They acknowledged our request, and they said we'll have their safety review between three to five weeks from last Friday. So, if not for the April meeting, we'll definitely have their suggestions for our May meeting.
Alright.
And then the third thing I had was regarding the comprehensive plan. Borough Council has directed me to apply for a grant that will basically defray the cost of the project. As you seen, the proposals came in, it, it appears to be a $75,000 project spread over two years. We've been talking to the state and there's, and the state DCD planner regarding our project. I submitted a grant application last Uh, I submitted a grant application last week for it, the grant would fund half, so thirty-seven, five. We wouldn't know if the grants award until late summer, early fall. So that, that's where we're at with the comp plan. Uh, regarding that though, as you know, we have six proposals received. Uh, the council's gonna hopefully set up a committee that's made up of planning commission and council members. To shortlist those proposals and, and interview, uh, firms, uh, over the next, uh, couple of months. So that it, when it comes timed, if we know our grants awarded or not by the end of summer, we can proceed either way, one doing it ourselves or, or, uh, without it.
Joe, did you say council is owning, putting that subgroup together?
Yes. I think it's gonna be a joint effort, Tim. That's the hope right now.
Go ahead, Dale.
Well, um, pushing it back, is that, that would push back the completion date also?
I, I think so, Dale, yes.
Okay, alright, I, I just tried to get a clarification, that's all.
Yeah, I, I, I know, like, I know we wanted to run with this like yesterday, but. Seventy-five thousand, I, I think it's, it's more responsible, if we can wait a couple of months. And, and save us thirty-seven thousand dollars, i- it's smart, it, two months aren't gonna make a difference on issues that's been here fifty years.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, and I, 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 I think it's, you know, um, I have no problem with it. Um, I don't know, you know, what that does to commitments from the, from the, um, the consultants.
Now, we've been in discussions, cause I had a couple of them ask about, you know, where we are, but, uh, I, I think it's, oh, these are questions for when we interview.
Okay.
But, uh, we have letters of support already for the comprehensive planning project from our state rep, our state senator and the school district so far, so.
Okay.
So it seems like, uh, we're, we're checking the right boxes.
Good job.
We've already had a lot of conversation with the state, so we're not going in cold, they know where we are, what our issues are. And, uh, what we're hoping to accomplish.
Okay, Joe, I have a question about, I'm sorry, was that Tim?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just have a question, so, and does the school district, if we got their, their input already, which is great. Um, does anything depend upon the outcome of the census in twenty twenty? I mean, demographics, age population, you know, that sort of thing, does that? Because if I recall correctly, in two thousand and five, they, as the Mapland who did it, did look at. The incomes and the, you know, patient, I mean, a patient, the populations. So, I don't exactly know when the twenty twenty census is probably gonna come out, but. I mean, is that our problem, or is that a problem?
I honestly don't know, Justine.
Okay, alright, okay.
I mean, that stuff should be, I remember looking into that when this idea first came out, Justine, and I just Googled real quick. To keep me honest here, that, all that data was released April first of twenty twenty. So it should be there for the taking, the twenty twenty. Analytics, assuming they stayed on schedule in the.
Okay, alright, alright, okay, thanks.
Um, question, just to, to play out that conversation on the, the additional two months, Joe. Are there implications to what we would or would not do, based on that grant, or is it just a function of how we're gonna pay for it in the end?
It, just a function of how we're gonna pay for this, that's all.
What's, then what's the idea of pausing to wait for that grant decision to catch up, if we're going either way?
Fifty thousand dollars, cause if it's a seventy-five thousand dollar project, we have twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this year. Next year, we gotta come up with fifty, and, uh, if we have, we only have to come up with thirty-seven, five spread over two years. Uh, we can afford it next year, fifth, coming up with fifty grand next year, uh, isn't gonna be that easy.
Okay, so.
That's really it.
Okay.
Alright. Or any, any other questions, comments?
I have one other thing, Justine.
Yeah.
Um, I was contacted by Justin, um.
No, Beinhauer, yeah.
He get ahold of you?
No.
Okay, um, apparently, uh, he, he's been out doing, um, some, some. Trying to gather people, interested parties, that type of thing, um, for, for a trail along Chartiers Creek.
Right.
And, um, I s- he did a, did a presentation at the library back in two thousand eighteen. I sent him an email shortly thereafter, um, and last week he sent, he replied to that email.
Okay.
And he's been trying to get to, trying, we've been trying to play phone tag and stuff, anyway, um, I directed him to Joe Cower.
Okay.
You know, I don't know where he's at with stuff, uh, you know, other than, I haven't connected with him, so I'm not sure what all's. Um, but, Joe, I don't know if he's got ahold of you yet, or?
Yeah, he called me on Friday, uh, I invited him to our, when we have the active, you know, Allegheny project moving forward. We'll have public meetings with that, that, uh, he could sit down to the table then, I, I suggested that to him.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would it be of any benefit to have him come and, and talk to us at a, at a meeting, or no?
That's your decision.
I mean, we can. I've talked to Joe, I've talked to him in the past about what he, what, you know, his thoughts, and they're in line with what we've talked about. You know, this, basically the same things we, you know, we've talked about as far as connecting.
Right.
Only connecting our parks, but connecting the parks to other communities' parks.
Right.
Um, you know, so, it, it, it would, I mean, for him to come to a meeting and for other people to hear. What he had, what he's talking about from a, from a different, a different voice.
Right.
Bad idea.
Dale, what do you think?
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, i- it seems like he's, he's trying to, he's trying to rally the troops. To, 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 you know, get a couple of trails.
Right.
And, um, you know, I, the more people that, that, um, you know, we can talk to about this. The more interest that we can bring to the table, you know, the easier, more hands make, um, you know, light work.
Right.
N- n- not only that, Dale, but then, as Joe, you know, you know, when you go looking for money, if it's for Bridgeville. You know, you can get some money, but if you're looking at multi municipals asking for the same thing. You know, they're much more, uh. Agreeable, you know, they like it whenever you start collaborating with other organizations, um, whether it be a community or what, whatever. Um, so, you know, getting, getting hit, cause he wants to, you know, he doesn't wanna just be, hey, I wanna put a trail in Upper St. Clair. He's like, I want Upper St. Clair to connect to Lafayette and Bridgeville.
Right, well, Joe, let me ask you a question, was it last year at one point, or may, it had to have been last year? That, did you have a discussion with Upper St. Clair when you were talking about this multi? Sectional, uh, comprehensive plan? Did you not say that St. Clair could have been interested in connecting with Chartiers Trail? With our trail in Chartiers Park, in closing that gap, or no?
No, uh, we did, I met with them about a month and a half, two months ago.
Okay.
Uh, it was, uh, Bridgeville, Upper St. Clair and Lafayette, the managers of the three towns met and, uh. Uh, there was enthusiasm to do it, to basically, the, the key is it, Allegheny Land Trust. To see if they would be interested or willing to connect through their property to Chartiers.
Okay, alright, well, okay.
Because Upper St. Clair at the time, uh, they're working on a plan to connect the rec center to the Montour Trail.
Okay.
Through Cecil to, to, to hit the Montour Trail, so the timing of going a couple more feet into Bridgeville, uh, they liked it.
Okay.
So, the, the energy's there, and the timing is right right now.
Perfect.
But we just need to, we need to create a partnership with the land trust.
Okay, do we know, uh, um, Mike, do you know anybody at the land trust?
I could find out.
Okay.
I'll do some digging.
I have a contact already.
Oh, okay.
I just have yet to reach out to him.
Okay, alright.
But I have it, so maybe, uh, uh, one day this week, Mike, if you could call me, I, I could use your help with this.
Oh, I gotta call, I mean, I'm, we're getting together this week anyway, so.
Alright, so, when it comes time.
Alright, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Thank you.
Alright. Anything else before we nu- move on to the next one? Do we want to talk about pedestrian safety? Did the, uh, Chief Chad report anything of outside of the numbers?
He, he gave us a report a couple of months back that summarized.
Right.
I believe seventeen pedestrian involved accidents over ten years, and that data was included. Uh, when we do the RFP for the active transportation plan, so I think when the professional planner will be able to use that. To work with.
Okay. Alright, well. Oh, I know, hold on for one second, let me get my notes here, um.
Sorry, Justin, real quick, can I, uh, I'm like a step behind tonight, can you, Joe, what is the, what is the? Is there any overlap between the safety review that PennDOT's doing in the next three to five weeks, plus or minus, and that active transportation effort? Do they have anything in common?
I honestly don't know, uh, the, I know, I, I think it's different, cause, uh. For example, uh, the response back from PennDOT, I, I think they're gonna be looking at more of like. Pedestrian safety or pedestrian like warning signage and crosswalks in that area, just on, on that little scope on Washington Avenue. Because, uh, in their letter, uh, it says, we will review the area and look at overall safety with a focus on pedestrian safety along the corridor. Based on our current workload, we hope to have the results within the next three to five weeks. Being that the review is focused on pedestrians, please keep in mind that pedestrian signage and markings are owned and maintained by the local municipality. We will forward you the results of the study upon completion. So, I think they're just gonna point out, you know, public works issues within that district for us to improve. Or needs to be upgraded or maintained.
Okay, do we give them that seventeen incident report?
Yes.
Or they have access to all that just by virtue of being who they are?
Uh, both, but, uh, they were actually here in person and I explained to them the letter that we sent to them. And all yours, your slides from last year, and the chief's report, they had all that data.
Okay, cool.
Yep. And they understood we were coming from, so, uh, hopefully, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a good report, that's something we could use to improve here.
Alright. The only other, I do have a couple of things that I just wanna, will throw out there, alright? Number one, I did my first answer, we're gonna invite the parking authority. Um, the other question that I have for you all is, are, can you? Are you, do you think that we have anything left over from twenty twenty-one? That hasn't been addressed, or has fallen by the wayside, or whatever, I mean, you know. Signage or, you know, street cleaning or whatever, is there anything that you can think of? Or if you look through your notes, that you can come up with, that you think has fallen by the wayside? If you do, then let's just talk about it at the next meeting, alright, okay. Um, let's see, and also too, one of the things that. Uh, for me, knowledge is a little bit dangerous, alright, and a couple of weeks ago. I attended one of those borough.org meetings where they were talking about protocols. Um, for council meeting and planning meetings. And one of the comments, um, that stuck, struck in my, stuck in my mind was that. The person who presented suggests that we do a protocol for planning meetings. And number one, I think it all, it has to do with the Sunshine Act. And number two, um, I'm certainly obviously not aware of all the protocols that need to be addressed. Even though I do have my Roberts book for dummies. Um, so, anyway, so what I'd like to do, do you think, I'd like to ask your opinion. Do you think that we need to address a protocol for planning meetings?
So, when you say like sunshine, I mean, I know like on council, you know, that there's a role.
Correct.
Does that apply to, you know, people like on, like, planning commission?
Well, a- according to the person that spoke, yes, and the thing is, especially now with everything happening via Zoom. Alright, um, you know, addressing, identifying yourself, giving your street address. And making sure that that goes into the notes, alright, and then the other, the other thing that struck. A stuck out to me was addressing the speakers. You know, actually speakers signing up and identifying themselves as they speak.
You're right, cause like, we, we assume, I mean, we're all sitting here and, you know, uh, Bob Socking. And, but it was, we, we all know who he is, but yeah, and normally, yeah, you would say, state your name and your address.
Right, 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 so, I just think, I, I'm a stickler for, for getting things out on paper. Alright, so then.
Ask Bob to state his name and his address for this meeting, you can see.
Right, yeah.
I mean, it's, if you're gonna do that, might as well start today.
Alright, okay, and then last but not least, any comments about that?
I, I think there's, I, I, I think there's some, some. Um, I, I, I think it's a good idea to, to add some formality to, to, to the program. Um, just for, for, you know, the, just to keep things going and just to be able to. Track of things a- as we, as we move along.
Right.
You know, one of the things that was talked about in that, in that meeting, um, in that program that you were just mentioning was. Um, you know, a lot of, a lot of, um, commissions have time limits.
Right.
Or speakers, you know, five minutes, ten minutes, three minutes, whatever it is. And, um, I don't know if that's something we wanna consider or not, um, I, I just.
Well.
I, I, there's an upside and a downside to it.
Right, right, I mean, personally, I think upfront, as we, if we, we do it upfront, because we're gonna be busy. I mean, we're gonna definitely be, it, I mean, that's just with comprehensive plan updates. That we're gonna be busy with, that's not including other business that we have to deal with. So, I just, I'm, you know, I just think that we do formalize it and, and put it on paper.
What do you think, Larry?
Oh, sorry, here? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think we, the protocols you're talking about, I know we've, we had those in place at one time.
Okay.
Uh. I mean, I'm not gonna tell you that they were rigidly enforced, uh, the time limit on speakers, you know, identifying. You know, their street address and whatnot, I mean, that's something that we've done over the years. Uh, I think it's probably more likely to happen in a live meeting where we're all in the same room than it is on these Zoom meetings sometimes. But, you know, it doesn't hurt to have a little bit of. Protocol, if you will, uh.
Alright, well, that's the perfect segue to my next question. Do we want to start doing in-person meetings at the Borough Building? Does anybody have objections or any thoughts as to what we can do? If we should do it?
I have reservations.
Okay.
Primarily because I've got a, a very high-risk individual living in the house with us.
Correct, and I, and Joe and I were talking earlier, and I wanted to know whether or not you could attend via Zoom. Alright, and if we can accomplish that, I mean, it's, it's really, it doesn't matter to me. I have both of my vaccinations, alright, so, I know that if we do the six. And the only person, the only thing I come home to is my doc, alright? So, you know, I don't have any outside influences that I have to deal with. So, I can, I completely understand your situation. Um, but I, you know, anybody else have any thoughts as to whether or not we should go back into person meetings?
Uh, excuse me, Justine, can I comment on this?
No, not yet. Not yet, afterwards, let us finish this.
Okay, fine.
Uh, Justine, for, for my part, I, I, you know, I miss, I miss the in-person, um, I wanna be very sensitive that everybody's got their.
Right.
You know, different situations and, and comfort levels, I, I have no reservations if we go back. You know, different situations and and comfort levels, I I have no reservations if we go back to in-person with, you know, I'm I'm expecting the normal safety protocols that are in place, but I I'd be all for it.
Well, the one thing that that, uh, I did notice when council was having their in-person meetings that the, uh, audio was less than stellar. Um, I mean, you can, so I don't know, Joe, did, was that taken care of, the audio?
Slightly better. We have microphones, but it doesn't completely, uh, it won't be to the quality that you have.
Yeah.
Right here.
See, that's the joy about Zoom, you know, you can hear everybody, so, um. I don't know, do you guys want to think about, I, the only thing I can say, if you haven't watched any of the council meetings where they were actually held in person. Then maybe go back, um, on YouTube and listen to them, because they were very muffled.
Yeah, that's that's the downside for the public. I mean, for us, you know, it's for selfish reasons, you know, we want to be in the same room discussing stuff. Uh, but for the public, yeah, they may need to see this.
Right, right.
That's the big reservation for for me, I guess.
But if it feels like that should be something fairly easy to remedy, no, Joe? Like with an operational budget that we get a recorder or a microphone.
I don't know how many microphones do you need, you know, like we had microphones in there for the room and not, I I run it off the laptop.
Well, why don't we look into that and see if there somehow we can get better audio? And everybody think about, oh, you know, whether or not we want, for the time being, want to stay with Zoom. So, I mean. Do we have to have the meeting at the Borough Council building, at the Borough building? Can we go to the fire department or is that reserved for extra-large meetings?
We could ask, I know there's discussions of moving Borough Council meetings to the fire hall so that social distancing could be done.
I don't know, okay. Any other comments?
Personally, uh, Justine, I'd be fine with live meetings, uh, like you, I've had both my shots, so.
Yeah, yeah. But again, you know, it's going back to what the the public needs to hear and how that, how they hear it. So that's my only issue, because it was frustrating. The two that I saw is very frustrating, so.
Even, even if we have a, a, um, meeting for the commission. If we've got public, you know, and we've got the the social distancing and take all the precautions. If we've got a number of people from the public that want to come in and and join us, or we're having a public hearing or something. Um, you know, that that could push the limits or or could.
Right.
A little dice.
So could you, if you had somebody that wanted to speak, because I know, like, just for example, like Allegheny County, when they have their council, the Allegheny Council meetings. If you want to speak, you have to be on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. You can't just show up at an Allegheny County Council meeting.
Same with Upper St. Clair.
What? Oh, or even, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
So you just can't just show up, so you would have to basically tell, you know, email the Borough and say, look, there's a meeting tomorrow. And I would, I want to be on the agenda to speak or on the list to speak as a visitor.
Right, and again, that goes, that goes back to the protocol, establishing what's included in the protocol.
Then you could have, if if you're going to, if you, you know, you know, you're going to have, you know, uh, five plant, planning commission members, uh, or Borough manager and, you know, maybe two or three visitors if, you know, if needed. And so you know, you want, and then anybody else that wants to watch the meeting can watch it on Zoom.
Okay, alright, well, let's sort of.
You can have to put it on Zoom, you could just do like your regular camera or whatever.
Right.
I guess I I appreciate the point too, Dale, but seven years of history, I can't remember I was ever pushing the occupancy boundaries of the Borough Building for our planning commission meetings. I'd love to get there, but I'm not sure it's something I've seen to date.
Yeah, council meeting is a different thing. I mean, there's been times where the council meetings, you know, they were outside in the hall, but that's a little different.
Yeah, yeah.
But. Alright, so. Any other comments, so then I'm, I'm going to give Bob Friar two minutes, Bob?
One quick question before, Justine, um, the, for interviewing the firms for the, uh, comprehensive. And Joe, um, do we know how many, like, I mean, we have, what, I think, six different proposals? Are we going to like, interview three or what are we, what are we going to try to narrow it down to for the interviews?
That hasn't been decided yet, uh, let me give the president of council and, uh, but I'm I'm thinking three.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, just curious.
Justine, I do have one comment.
Yeah.
And I came a little bit late to the meeting, but was there any discussion? Uh, or any acknowledgement of the passing of, uh, Pat de Blasio senior?
No, sorry.
Uh, that's alright, I mean, I just wanted to take the opportunity because Pat was on planning commission for many years. Uh, I think most of you are aware of that. He was very much an out-of-the-box thinker. And whether you agreed or disagreed with Pat, he he, you always had to have your thinking cap on when he was talking.
Yeah.
Truthfully, it was a lot of fun to listen to him. Uh, he always had the Borough's best interests at heart, uh, that man gave a lot and you know, I think that, uh, I'm hoping that the, that the council can see its weight fit to do something, uh, even if just a moment of silence, uh, at their next meeting for Pat.
Well, I know, they, I know at the, at the meeting they just had, they did, they, uh, they they spoke of him very fondly.
Yeah, Pat was, he was, he was a lot of fun, he really was, I, he was the original out-of-the-box thinker.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, so I'm going to give Bob Friar two minutes.
That's, that's long enough. I just want to mention one other thing about Pat de Blasio. There were, uh, I was in involved with the planning on his funeral service and so on. There were hundreds of visitors at the funeral home and the family, uh, for the funeral mass over at Holy Child Church, I forget the name of it now. Uh, they, the family had two opera-type singers, a guy and the girl. And the funeral service was the most, uh, moving I've ever attended. It was really, uh, something, uh, to behold. At any rate, I just want to mention, uh, about, uh, the importance of having some face-to-face meetings. Since you guys are going to be involved in the planning and the future of the community. Uh, the face-to-face meetings with certain safeguards about the the COVID nineteen flu. It would allow presentations to be made of drawings where everybody could look at the same drawing. And you could have two-way conversations between your planners and the drawings, or myself and the drawings or whatever. And, uh, but the third thing I want to mention is, I I I don't know what member of the commission um, uh, cited that a comprehensive plan should provide benefits to the surrounding communities. That's the key to everything. If you guys come up with a plan that will end the ma-long columns of traffic that sit outside Bridgeville trying to get through that that is as much of a deterrent for the, uh, businesses and people in Safiyet, calling it Upper St. Clair. You you won't have to worry about the money. But remember, Washington Avenue is a PennDOT road and Barheer Road is an Allegheny County road. If you do it right, you you'll be paying very little for some spectacular improvements you can request for those two main thoroughfares. And again, thanks very much for allowing time to talk to you guys tonight.
Alright, thank you, Bob, thank you. Alright, any other questions, comments? Um, I'd summarize, but I've lost my notes. So, anyway, a motion to adjourn?
I made the motion.
Second?
Second.
Alright. Well, that wasn't too bad, thank you.